Only $150 a year, so he never really noticed, and now he's noticed it.
Did he get two separate tax bills, sewer bills?
I don't know how the system's set up. I think it goes on his tax bill.
I was gonna say, I think we're not talking about a user fee. We're talking about the sewer, when the sewers were finished, everybody got assessed their share of the cost.
And he took the no-
And it's just part of your tax bill. You don't get a separate bill.
He took the no-interest loan, and that's been, he's been paying that with his taxes.
No, the, two separate things. The no-interest loan is the $2,000 to connect from the sewer line to your house. Every homeowner in town that has sewer was also, had a special assessment of tax that's payable over 20 years?
I'm, I think that was, I think that was also a no, that was a no-interest loan. That wasn't just added to your tax. That was, that's another, that's part of the, the no-interest loan, over 20 years.
How's it broken down? How does anybody know about that?
Well-
He doesn't, he doesn't have a connection there. It's an unbillable lot.
So it must've been just when it, when it came by his property, he got assessed the-
Right, because he has a tiny bit of frontage on, on West Boylston Street.
Yeah, I'm just wondering how it, how it came up finally.
Yeah, it's, it's, there's a lot of-
So the abatement is a tax abatement?
It's a betterment abatement.
When, when the sewer bills, everybody was paying a, an assessment before it was finalized. Once it was finalized, the town collected like a million dollars to pay back stabilization, I think it was the stabilization fund, yes? To pay back the stabilization fund. You, everybody that owned the house at the time was given, was told, here is your assessment. If you didn't write that check, and you have sewers, you're, a portion of your taxes that you're currently paying is, is towards that sewer. Separate, and it's at zero interest. But you didn't have to sign anything to make this happen. You had to proactively pay the betterment, or you could just pay with your taxes over time. What you're talking about is you could borrow up to $2,000 and pay it back interest-free for 20 years.
I thought they both were, but that, that's fine. So the abatement, is a sewer abatement or a tax abatement?
It's a sewer abatement. It's for the sewer betterment.
A sewer betterment abatement.
Betterment. He's paying a betterment on an unbillable lot. And they already determined that he didn't have to pay it, and they already paid him off what he had already paid back in 2011, but it just never got taken off the books. So he's been paying it ever since. And the tax went down to, she verifies everything, and all the numbers are hers. And once, once we get this done, I'll go back to see her, we'll get some forms filled out, and make sure that we get it stopped, so it doesn't happen again. It's already happened once.
That's, so you need an abatement on the thousand?
She says I need two. I need one for the 1,075-10, which is what we owe him, and we need one for the 1,228-64, to eliminate that from the books that he would owe in the future if he kept handling. He still owes 1,200 if it was a billable lot.
I'll make a, a motion to approve both abatements.
That's it.
Motion, second, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
And we have paint, Tom White Paint Lines, just an annual thing. It's a little more than last year, because I'm going after some of the, the edge lines, and some of the larger roads. They haven't been done since I've been here. They're getting kind of faded, so. The total is, I got 13,000 down. I don't have all the bids in. I have one bid for 10,009, so it's 11, so I put it 13, just in case, because these aren't always exact. When they do their painting, you'll get the final number when they're done. But I put in a thing for 13,000. I'm asking for a line paint for the roads this year.
And this is for authorization to use Chapter 95?
Chapter 90, yeah. And I have, just so you know. We didn't do the, we didn't do the Lee Street job, so we have 186, 938, and seven cents in Chapter 90 available. And this'll take 13 or less.
Up to 13, yeah.
Can I, is it line, central line?
Central line and edge lines.
The side?
I have a list of roads if you want to see.
Oh, a list of roads.
Quite lengthy.
Can you read them?
Can you read them?
[laughing]
Well, I, I think, well, I think maybe we should-
It's not the one recently paved?
Yeah, it is every-
This is, every year we do this.
Not every road every year, but some of the main ones we do do.
So not only the recently painted, the recently paved?
All the recently paved, plus all the faded ones.
Plus the ones, yeah, we just do it on normal.
So what about the crosswalks? Are you going to paint too?
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. That's the next little subject we'll talk about.
I make a motion to approve the-
Up to, up to 13,000.
$13,000 for Chapter 90 line painting.
Second.
Out of Chapter 90, I'm sorry.
Yep, out of Chapter 90.
Have a motion in a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? And now we're gonna talk about-
Crosswalks. Now, it's two choices. Do we want to repaint them a different color, or do we want to eliminate color altogether?
Oh.
I would like to eliminate the color altogether.
I, I agree.
Just because I'm hearing, if I paint them over, paint over them, that paint's gonna wear off eventually, and then I'm back to blue. So I'm gonna have to, have to keep painting them. So if I start painting them now, I'm gonna have to keep painting them. Whereas if I, I looked into it, I can sandblast them completely off, and go back to just the white and white, and that's gonna save us, or at least $1,000 a year in paint, in blue paint, in labor. It'll be easier, easier and quicker to paint them all. And then I'm hearing issues of, actually motorcycles having trouble with them when they're wet. So with the hash marks and the white, it eliminates that problem. So I've looked into some sandblasting, and actually they call it dustless blasting, where they can come in and they can sandblast them all, you know, I think in a day. They get two, two to two and a half dollars a foot. We have 2,200 feet, so we're talking 4,400 to 5,500 dollars.
That's how many crosswalks?
That's all of them. That's, I got 11.
11 that are painted with the-
With the blue.
With the blue. And then you're gonna just go line, line, and then-
Yep, just like the state does. And we can do that Chapter 90, I believe. I'll look into that for you. If you give me approval for the money, I'll get you the forms later.
Yeah, I, I talked to you about how they ever turned into blue, and I guess it's-
I did look into that, and it was a former director, and it was, because of the school colors, they did it. And it's very common in a lot of towns. It's not uncommon to do this, but it, blue was for the color of the schools.
Yeah.
It was back in 2009 roughly.
Yeah.
And, and just so the public knows, the document that was referenced at, at town meeting, there's another section in it that, you know, we talked about subdued colors. There's another section in that same document down below that specifically addresses the color blue, and it says, "Blue shouldn't be used for any, anything, for any street painting at all, under any circumstances, because that's designated for handicap parking spaces only."
It's the same shade, too, yeah.
Right, so, if this is a, we need to do this sooner rather than later, in my opinion, type of thing.
I'm thinking next week, if we can get the approvals.
And then next, and then next time we do it, it'll cost much less, because-
Well, we'll do the sandblasting once.
No, I'm saying it will cost much less-
Oh, yeah.
Because you won't be using all that paint.
Yeah, we'll use a little bit more white, but a lot less blue.
A lot less blue.
So it'd save, maybe 900 a year, we'll save, and, you know, in four or five years, we've paid for the sandblasting.
Right.
So if you, that, it looks like, like a lot of money for the sandblasting. Can you do like a, what's it, seal coating kind of a thing?
Well, if anything you put on, it's gonna wear off, and we're back to blue. That's the problem.
Plus it's slippery.
And that's the other thing, just came up recently, is it's slippery. I, I drive a bike. I've never noticed it, but then again, I don't ride in the rain. But if you happen to get caught in the rain, apparently they're very slippery.
And what about painting the lines and stuff you guys, that, how much is that gonna be?
Painting?
The crosswalks themselves?
I didn't really look at that. We do, we do them all over town every year. It's just the blue ones we're focused on, because of the extra cost.
So will you be able to sandblush just the blue out and leave the white lines there for now, until next year?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. We're just gonna put a, just put a plywood down next to the white, and just go right along the edge.
Good. Okay, so we won't, we won't have to do those till they wear off after-
No. We don't even have to hash them. I don't even think it's, I'm not even sure if it's, you have to hash them, because I noticed the state over in the center of the town, one of them's hashed in front of Honey Farms, but there's two bigger ones in the middle of the intersection that aren't. So I don't know if it's actually legal, so if we don't hash them this year, I don't think that's an issue.
You do that yourself?
Yeah, we have a paint machine.
Okay.
If you don't paint, if you don't sandblast, do you think next year, all the paint will be gone?
Not all of it, no. It'll, it'll wear off in the, in the wheel ruts, but you'll still have blue on the sidewalk, you'll have blue at the edges, you know. Because there's one on Hartwell, if you want to take a look at it. It hasn't been done in a while, but it's still, you can still see the blue.
So do you have to spend money?
Yeah, but like I said, in four or five years, you pretty much paid for it, because we're not gonna be put, blue down every year. We'll save, say, $800 a year in, in blue paint, that we're not gonna use. Eight or nine.
No, I, I asked you about this, about the, the look of brick, not the brick. You say that they last, they may last longer because it's a dye instead.
Yeah, it might. I mean, and if we do, in the future, any roads we do that have crosswalks, we could do, we could look into that, having them stamped. It's like a stamped asphalt. They, they pave it, and I think they roll it once, and then they put the mold on, then they roll over, and it stamps in a brick form, and then they dye it.
Right, and I know they wear out after a while, but you say they might last longer-
They might. I see them on Shoesbury Street in Worcester.
I might ask that you just look into that and see, if, you know, we get four or five years out of them, you know, instead of every year, it could be, it'll, it'll be maybe something we could do around the-
Well, that would be, yeah.
Around the parks. I don't know.
Be interesting, yeah.
Just to see what the, because I've seen them, I've seen them last.
Yeah. The probably, the only issue would be, if they do wear out, how do, how do we revitalize them?
Because they wear out just from people driving over. Not the color, but they just driving over.
Right, and the sun beats on them, and-
Okay, so you need a motion to-
I need a motion for, say, 500, that'd be the worst-case scenario, on Chapter 90 money, and I'll, then I'll get you the forms.
So-
Second.
And you said you think it can be used on the Chapter 95?
I'm almost positive. It's, I almost could've probably put it in with the other Chapter 90, with the paint lines, paint line eradication, plus paint lines in one form, but I'll just do it separately.
Okay, have a motion, second. Any other discussion on this matter? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
$600.
Oh, the, the grant that we got at town meeting.
The $600?
Yeah, I was gonna get a few stanchions for the sidewalks. There's not much more I can do with it, because we have, right now we have two, we have two, and then we have one and one. So I could get two more, and then maybe put one over the library. There's a pretty busy one over there. Get a couple over there. I can't get many of them. There are a couple. I think they're like 100, I think they're a couple hundred bucks apiece with the base and the top, so I was just gonna get like two or three of those, and put the 600 bucks. It has to be a traffic-related thing.
Can I?
And it's such a small amount of money.
Go ahead, Ray.
Unless you have another idea.
So if you have the money, you know, we do need to make that one side of the road, near the library, no parking?
Yeah, you're-
People are parking.
Yeah, but $600, that's what I'm gonna get.
Not gonna make it, $600.
Not gonna do that with $600.
No.
Well, what, I mean, there's no parking signs there?
No parking signs.
Are they there yet?
We have them on the trees temporarily. We haven't put them proposed up yet.
Okay, so there's no parking signs already?
I'm, I'm talking about parking signs.
Oh, the signs themselves?
Yeah.
Yeah, I could do that.
Well, I'm, what do you mean?
Well, I need to put more park, I need to put park, I have to get some more signs, because I need to put this side on the sign, because people are just moving up from where the sign is and parking. You know, with it, with it, it's on the pole, they don't park there.
Right, so no parking this side?
Right, so I do have to get some more signs, so I could do that. Get a couple of stanchions and some more signs.
So now, you know, people are parking this side too?
They're packing on both sides, I noticed.
Yeah, they are. They're just kind of avoiding where the signs are.
Well, they're gonna have, once we put "no parking" the sign, then they can be-
Then they can be ticketed.
Ticketed, or maybe we can just, it's, obviously the house is on that side of the street, so maybe if we can just give them all a letter from the DPW, or, I don't know how you would do it.
I don't know if the, if the residents are parking, or if it's people going to the library. What I've seen is up by the, what is it, the, what's the name of that business?
Masonic?
Right across from the library, there's a, there's a club.
Yeah.
The Masonic?
It's, it's something like that.
The Oddfellows.
Oddfellows.
Yeah, Masonic is about it.
There's no sign up in that area, per se, so they kind of move up past the last sign, just party in that area. I haven't seen anybody further back, but it could be happening.
They are parking.
Are they?
So if we can get the no parking this side, and you can get those through, probably-
Yeah, definitely get those through Mascor, yep. So I'll get a few signs, and maybe, I'd like to get at least one stanchion, so I can get the two on both sides, so.
And what's the plan on those crosswalk signs for the winter? Because they're gonna be plowed down, I think, if they're.
Yeah, we'll probably have to pull them.
I would think, because I would, once the snow starts getting, they're gonna be all-
They'll get knocked around.
All over the place. Okay, so do you need a motion to spend that 600, that big grant we got?
I don't think it necessarily needs a motion, just to make you aware.
Yeah.
We do have to spend it by the end of the calendar year.
This year.
Don't spend it all in one.
That's a big deal.
Which, um, last time or the time before you were in, we were talking about, like a flashing light at the schools. Did you ever look into that?
I have. They're, they're like 1,100 bucks apiece, to buy them. That's not installed. Do you want to-
That's the two, that, you say a piece, for one crosswalk?
It's 22 for two, yeah. That's for one. They're solar, they talk to each other, and you push a button on one side, they both go off. We did talk a little bit about the canopy that's over by the school. There's a lot of trees there, so the solar may or may not work, but we'll talk to the light company, see if they can give us a drop to the pole. I noticed up, over the couple of schools, I took some pictures.
It would be the one across, for the parks, and then the one crossing the school? Is that the two you're talking about?
Those are the two, I think they're the most important, and over at Gooddale, because a lot of people park at Gooddale and come across that, and go over to the parks. In fact, that's probably, that one probably gets more use than the other two.
Materials for each is 1,100?
Yeah.
2200, one each side.
Cheapest I've seen so far.
So there, so it's 22 each side, each crosswalk?
Yeah, that's if we install it ourselves.
So 40, $4,400 to make it.
Four of them, yeah. Plus, however we, if we do, if we can do solar, we're fine.
But can we, can we install them myself, though? I mean, I don't-
Well, that's the thing. We, we probably would want, I'll get an installation price, too.
I just think it's very important with that area, and it gets so much use. And then my other last question is, the solar signs that we have at the different stops, I think we should have them flashing during the day and not just at night. I've had people ask me about it, so I think it's something that we should talk about.
You do that, I can do that. It's just a matter of disconnecting the electric eye. It's not, no cost.
Will the battery, will the battery take it?
I think so. I see, I see other towns that go full-time. In fact, Holden has a couple that I go through all the time, that flash all the time.
Every town I go to, they're always on. They don't, they don't-
It seems like they are.
Yeah. I think that's a good idea.
I don't have any issue with it.
Okay.
And that's, and the only other thing is, are you updating old stop signs that you can't see anymore, like the one right up here on Franklin and Route 12, on a dark night? It has no reflective material on it anymore, so do you, Karen?
I haven't really got to that yet, but I can definitely hit, hit those.
Yeah, especially some of these, because that one there at night, you can't even see it. I think it's so worn out.
Actually, there's one up Frank, up on the other end of Newton that I've been looking at.
That same thing, it's kind of worn out.
Yeah, it's just old.
Yeah, so maybe you can take a look at those.
Okay, Sarah, thank you.
Okay, very good.
One more, one more. I, I'm sorry. With all the, the new streets that are being paved, there's punchless items that have to be done, people's sidewalks, curbs. Does the town pay for that, or does that get done by the contractor?
Well, believe it or not, we usually do it ourselves, but they offered to do it this time, and I took them up on it. I called them up, and I said, "Listen, we have these issues here and here, and here," and the owner of the company, the owner's son that's been doing the project, Drew, he's a Drew Forrester. He's a great kid, and he said, "No, we'll come in, don't worry about it, we'll take care of it." So all the stuff they did on Henry, Bowen, and Maple, they did.
They were on Henry a couple days ago, just fixing people's-
Little berms, little driveway aprons, little stuff like that, which I was really surprised. Normally, we do that ourselves.
I mean, it, it looks great, but is that, does the contract say that they're supposed to do that?
Doesn't. That's why I was surprised they did it. Normally, it's a, it's an extra charge, like this, there's a driveway apron price we have in the contract that they could have used, but they didn't, they said they were off, they were fine with it.
That's good, thanks.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Next item is consider voting to sign the November 6, 2018 election warrant. I don't think there's much, that, that's these with all the blue. I mean, that's, that's these?
These, yes.
And this is, these are just, the state says he has the warrant, and we put our title on it, right?
Thank you.
I'll make a motion to sign the warrant.
Motion, second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Go ahead, start rolling pens at each other, guys. Jeez.
Hey, go back. Consider signing letter of support requesting more transparency in the town on the various state entities acquire land in their community.
Boy, that's a good one.
What do you got, Anita?
So we received a request from a, a group of other communities, mostly western, western mass towns, and they're looking to try to have any community that's impacted by the state acquisition of land, send letters asking specific items. One, that, that any time that there's state-owned land, that if there's any question about it, any hearings should be held in the communities where the parcel in question is actually located, rather than having the hearings be in Boston. So they're looking to have the hearings be local to the communities that may be impacted. They're also asking that the towns would be sent single-topic notifications of any kind of proposed changes or actual compensation to the land compensation procedure. In the past, what they've done is they send letters which have multiple issues on them, and it's kind of embedded in, and they want this to be just a single letter, making it very clear what the proposed change is. They're also asking that towns be reimbursed for the state-owned land on a consistent annual basis, using a set formula. There has been fluctuation in the past, depending on the state's revenue levels, so they're looking to have that be consistent year to year, and that the legislature should explore and support ways to make it easier for farmers to obtain mortgages for agricultural properties, so that more land can stay in agricultural use, rather than being just given or sold to the state, because it's easier. So they're asking for letters of support, and Nancy has prepared two letters. One is to Sean Cronin at the Division of Local Services, and the other one is to Secretary Beaton at the Office of Environmental Affairs.
So all of this is in one, one request, one request? One letter is asking for all of the items you listed?
Yes, I mean, the letters-
I thought at the beginning, we probably had a shot at getting all those, until they started talking about the money, extra money, and the-
You see that the letters, depending on which one it's going to, is a tad different, but they're, the two letters that we're asking you to consider authorizing the chair to sign.
I read the two letters. We didn't say anything about the farm loans in our letters, right? Is that correct? I mean, the first one to, to Sean Cronin talks about the single-topic notification and holding the hearings in the towns. I think both of those are great ideas, because if something's affecting land in West Boylston, I don't want to have to go to a hearing in Boston on it. And the, the single-topic notification, in the, in the computer age, if they say no to the second one, it's literally no extra work for them to send it out as a second computer blast. So even if they say no to number two, holding the hearings here, which they probably will, I can't see why they wouldn't at least let us know, "Hey, heads up, this has got the red exclamation point on it, you need to read this one, and it's not part of 85 different things."
Right, and the farm one's not in here?
Yeah.
That's the only, that was just-
The two letters basically are hitting the first two topics, the sending the single notice, notifications, and holding the hearings locally.
So we don't, we're not sending letters on the other request?
These were the suggested letters that they're asking us to send.
Oh, I don't know what you're talking about. Do, I hear a motion.
I'll make a motion to authorize the chair to sign both letters.
Okay.
Have a motion, second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Consider accepting resignation for the purpose of retirement from the town administrator effective January 18th. And I'll just read the letter from the town administrator. In accordance with the terms of my employment contract, I hereby submit this letter in my written notice, as my written notice to the Board of Selectmen, as my intent to voluntarily resign from my position of the town administrator for the purposes of retirement. My last day of employment will be January 18, 2019. I thank the town of West Boylston for the opportunity the community has provided me to serve in the capacity as town administrator. I have greatly enjoyed working with the many dedicated employees, town officials, and volunteers over the past years. I will work with the board and all staff to ensure a smooth transition upon my departure. Okay. Any comments, discussion on that matter? Thank you very much, and I'm sure we'll have other meetings, but good luck-
Thank you.
-with the retirement. And the next item is-
Do we have to vote to accept?
Vote to accept. Consider accepting resignation. It doesn't say vote, but do we need to vote to accept this letter?
Technically, it's not required, but-
That's, that's fine then. Okay, thank you. Next is discussion regarding search for new town administrators. I don't, I, I, we, I put this on the agenda for this meeting. We can discuss some, some information tonight, or we can talk about it at the next meeting, whatever the board would like to, would like to do. I mean, some of the things we talked about was, in the past, we've had a, we posted the position, and we've had a review committee that reviewed the, the applications, and then gave us two or three. I have no problem with something like that. I would, I would just like, and I think we've talked about it, that maybe one, or probably, I'd say two board members be on the review committee of that, and I don't know if there's any suggestions on that.
I, I agree 100 percent. We should have two members of the Board of Selectmen, and you know, maybe three members from the community.
I think the review committee is, is a necessity, obviously, because if it's, we are not gonna get people to apply if they have to, if the name has to be read in public at the beginning of the application process, and they're an existing town administrator, and the town doesn't know they're looking, it, it could affect their careers. So I, I really strongly feel that we should have a committee that brings us three recommended people at the end of the process, or no more than three recommended people at the end of the process.
And, and under the, will this, as a subcommittee now need to be posted and opened? Or this situation would not be?
No, it was only going to require it to be an open process if it was the entire Board of Selectmen that was conducting the review.
Right.
But if you have an appointed committee of which there's not a form of the appointing authority, it can go through that normal, closed, first-round process.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I agree with you that there should be at least two, two people from here to represent, to help the process, so I think that's a good voice for us, and I think it makes a lot of sense.
Yeah, and I, I mean, I would ask the two senior members of the committee if that's all right with the board. I don't know if there's any other discussion on that, or who else wanted to do it, but any other thoughts?
I agree with that.
I don't have an issue.
No, you have.
I, I do have an interest, but I think you and Chris, being the senior ones, can, can handle it.
So do we wanna, I guess, could we stop that committee now, and just make the motion tonight for two members? I don't see why not, right?
You can appoint the, the two representatives from your committee tonight. You can appoint the two representatives from your committee tonight.
Do I hear a motion?
Make a motion to appoint Chris and John as the representatives to the town administrator search committee.
Second. Have a motion second. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, now, how would the, in the past, did we have five, Nancy, do you recall, did we have five residents? We didn't break it down to certain groups. We just said residents, correct?
I believe in the past, we had a member of the personnel board.
Okay, we did.
I thought we had a member of the finance committee and we had three residents, but I could go back and look at that.
Do we have any department heads?
No, I-
Because that wouldn't be unusual unless the selectmen are filling that role.
Yeah, I would, I don't-
I thought we had, I think there were five members because there was finance committee, three residents, and someone else.
Finance committee and then-
Personnel board.
Personnel board, okay.
So do we want to make that decision now or do we want to look at what it was in the past and then go from the-
Well, if it is five members, do we want to keep it as a five-member board with two board of selectmen or do we want to-
Make it seven.
Assuming that it is the personnel board, the finance committee, and three town residents, do we want to still have the personnel, finance rep, and three town residents plus the two of you?
That would be a lot of, that would be a lot of members, you know, if you have three members under, you know.
So you're saying, you're saying five, seven?
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just throwing it out there. I, you know, I don't have strong feelings one way or the other. I'm just throwing it out there for discussion.
I would think enough, five would be better.
Personnel board is three members?
It's meant to be a five-member board.
And the, well, if we cut it down, do we want to, no finance committee member, no resident, one resident, two residents with just a personnel board? I don't know how we would want to break it down.
And the reason I'm saying seven is we're going to have two of us, two other people that are, you know, on boards and one outsider looking in input. And I kind of feel that we should have, you know, the more diverse crowd on the board, you know, and if we had, although I don't know how much interest we get, when, last time, did we get a lot of interest from the town to volunteer for the board?
I honestly don't recall.
I personally don't think seven's such a bad number, depending on however they create a checklist and however it's decided to do it, especially because I am very positive about having two of us there. But I also think we need other representation from the town. And I don't think, personally, I wouldn't go down, I wouldn't change the three from the town, the one finance or the one personnel, because personnel should be there, obviously. That's part of their role.
Well, I mean, I guess the only issue with, the bigger the board gets, the harder you get, you got to set up to meet.
Well, if you're making the commitment, then this is when you're meeting, so-
It's tough. Not because they're making, they might work, they might be away, it's just, and I think there's going to have to be-
Getting a meeting is the problem.
It's a problem with, you know, with our board. So we have seven people, we're gonna, we might end up being, do we have to have a forum on something like that?
Yeah.
We would have to have-
Appointed committee.
So we could, we could go with four at any time. Then I guess if we had, I think five would be easier. But I, I don't know. We can, we can wait till the next meeting. I don't think we're going to be posting this in the next couple of weeks.
I don't have a problem waiting.
Yeah, and maybe we can look out, just look what other towns may do with this, Nancy? Is that possible through your group?
Sure.
Just to see how they break it up and maybe we'll, maybe we'll learn something that we should, we should, instead of personnel and finance, maybe we should do something else. I don't know, from just researching other towns. Not that ours is wrong or the other towns are right, but just to get an idea. So-
Mr. Ruchel, maybe something we should also consider as an alternate? Like you said, if people aren't there, I'm not sure if that would be something that would be a good idea or not, but I think when Nancy does her research, we can get some other information on that.
I would say, as far as I'm concerned, and I'm sure John, I would make the commitment on this, that I would be here. I'm sure-
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't mean the board, I meant the whole-
Five members and two alternates? Is that what you're talking about?
And they're at every one of the alternates still need to be at every meeting. They can't come in after we have three meetings-
Right.
And we knocked out four people and then they come in. So alternates would have to be at every meeting.
Right.
Which is called in to vote only when they need it.
And it's an ad hoc committee that's going to meet for a short period of time. Why would you possibly want to be an alternate on that committee?
I was just trying to think of another alternative to the seven that might work.
But they would all have, yeah, why don't we look at-
We'll get a list from Nancy and figure out what other towns are doing.
And then at that, for the next meeting, if we could look for that. Now, should we also look into, did we, did we find out, I think we can post, can we post before you leave in January? So maybe at the next meeting, we can also put an agenda item to look at the last posting, the qualifications, I'll send it out to the board, and we can talk about that at the next meeting, if that's possible. Is that good that we can look at if there's any changes we want to make to the, to the posting and to the items needed?
Do we also want to have a discussion about whether or not we're going to go with an interim town administrator?
Yeah, but we do have plenty of time, right, until January eighteenth?
Still, we'd still probably, even in the best case scenario, I think we'd go past January eighteenth.
I think if you're going to have this be advertised for a reasonable amount of time, you're definitely going to go past January eighteenth.
So I think that, that can be discussed at the next meeting. I mean, how we, how we, the only, Anita may tell me I'm wrong on this, but I just think January, February is probably the slowest time in town. I'm sure it's not a nothing to do time, but it's, I know we're getting ready for budget for May.
Budget's the issue.
So that starts in January usually?
Yep. So before I leave, I would have all the budgets in so that whoever replaces me would have all the data necessary to start compiling the budget.
Okay.
All the work in terms of revenue projections would already be done.
Yeah, so, oh, yeah, so maybe the next meeting, we can, we can discuss that too. And then maybe at that time, we can look at some timeline that we can put in place. Anita gave some information on that that we can bring up and look at, but we can set up a timeline, posting, how long we're posting it for, subcommittee, and then from there on, we can do a posting, a timeline, so we can have an idea. Okay. Next item is all business. Review VHB charges. Now, I had this, I think this was sent out, was it sent out separately to the agenda or was it in the agenda?
It was in the same email as the agenda.
Yeah, yeah. So I don't know. I have here, it's kind of, kind of a weird spreadsheet to understand. I mean, I know how it's, you can't sort it different ways because of the way it's listed. So I don't know. It's kind of good to see what, you know, when businesses come up to us and say, I spent all this kind of money, and then you look at this and say, well, they didn't spend that much, but, or they spent more, I don't know. So if there's any discussion on this.
Well, my, one thing I have is, we talked about, they're not under contract, they haven't been under contract for a long time. It's been like twelve years, something like that.
I don't know the exact period, but it's, but it's been a number of years.
So is there a way, if someone wants to have a review, which planning board asks for review process, they can go out for bid and have like three companies bid on it or four companies bid on it?
Most communities would go out to bid for engineering services every few years, even though it's not mandated to do that. And the reason they do that is because it's a best practice that's promoted by the state. It makes sure that you're staying as competitive with your rates as possible. Now, you know, the planning board argues that they're very concerned that if we do go out to bid for this service again, that we'll find that the rates will increase over what we're currently being charged by VHB. But, you know, you really won't know that unless you go out and do the competitive process. The other thing that needs to be taken into account is the fact that there is a law required under these, these special accounts that get set up for applicants, that you are supposed to allow applicants an opportunity for a second choice engineering firm. If there is any conflict of interest or any concern about the engineering firm chosen, you have to provide an alternate engineering firm for that applicant to take advantage of. You can't force them to use just the one firm. So by going out to do competitive bidding, then you're establishing your backup alternate engineering firms that can be used in those instances.
So do you see an issue?
I think, I think, you know, the- Hold on one second. Are you done, John?
No.
Okay.
I just want to, do you see an issue with having four or five firms to bid, to pick from? Is, as a, if I was building a project next door and planning board want a review of it, have somebody review of it, and they said, you know, you have, just like I do when I build a contractor or I have something done, I go out to bid. Is there, is there an issue for the town to have four or five bid and it's up to the developer to choose who he wants?
It's not an issue. Typically, when communities do that, they're pre-vetting a set of pre-approved engineers. So that engineering firm has already gone through a very careful vetting process by the town to make sure that they have all the necessary qualifications. That vetting process identifies any specialty areas that that engineering firm might have that might be important for applicants to know. So that would be, you know, certainly, the town can do that. But, you know, you would need to make it very clear that these engineering firms are equally established, they've all been vetted, and it would be, they would be available for the applicants to choose from.
We do that with the water plant. When they, if someone wants to hook up something like that, we give them a list of people they can choose from-
Right.
And that's what they choose from. To me, it would be the same idea.
It's also similar to the trash haulers that are approved by the Board of Health.
I think, you know, this, what we are discussing is the planning board issue. I think we should include the planning board or invite the planning board next meeting. And then they should have a say in this. That's one thing. Second, yes, the VHB did not go, we didn't go for bidding for a while. So the reason being, that's what the reason I was hearing, if we go bidding, it will be more. And also, in the, to that, you know, do they have an alternate if there is a conflict of, between the companies, VHB or the other companies' conflict? There are incidences. There are other firms. They did, they did work for the town, not only VHB. If I remember, Merkati is one of the firm. They are working on some of the town projects. If the one in Holy Cross, it's a different, other than VHB, there is another firm was working. Because Holy Cross engineers are VHBs. So that's why, you know, there is another firm working. So I think, you know, it's better. We can discuss, we can ask, but I think, you know, we should include, if we are talking about this, the charges and the reason why VHB is there, we should invite planning board at this time, you know.
Well, two, two issues. The, it's our responsibility to get the engineer, correct? It's not, we go out to bid for this, not the planning, not the-
Technically, it's the chief procurement officer, which is the town administrator that does the procurement process.
So we would, we would ask that person to go out to bid on this project, on this, on this item. And Holy Cross did use VHB, so I don't know. Cumberland Farms used another company, but Holy Cross used VHB. I'm just looking at the, I'm looking at the chart.
There are, there are other, other projects in this town did use another-
Yeah, I see Cumberland Farms was the one, the one that stands out.
Yeah, I may be wrong.
Graves.
Graves Engineering, I think.
Yep.
Graves, Merkati, there are a few other firms.
I think having, I think not going out to bid because VHB is telling us that if we go out to bid, the price is going to be a lot higher.
That's what I mean. That's my question. Where did the, why does the planning board feel, where's, where are they getting their information that if we go out to bid, the price is going to be more? What is that based on?
So why don't we include the planning board in this discussion?
And you're on the planning board.
I agree, but-
Very specific. You said-
Yes.
You personally just said, if we go out to bid, it's going to be more.
Because the rates, the quoted by the VHB are the very first contract, what they were, whatever they had. So they did not increase any rate. So if they go to the current rate, the rate will be different. That's what they said.
So VHB, the answer is VHB is working on whatever their initial contract was?
That's correct.
Okay, that's fine. I just wanted to know where that information came from.
But, do I have something?
I think it has to be competitive. For anything anybody does, it should go out to bid. And so if there's five, five people want to make bid, maybe only one person will bid on it. You don't know. But if five, they have, should have a choice. And it's only fair to the developer to do that.
But, and again, I always say when we bid hourly, I hate bidding hourly contracts because what takes VHB three hours, they take the cheaper guy six hours. So I don't know if we can put also that, like, some type of project and say, can you give us what the cost would be or something?
You don't have, you don't have to bid hourly, do you?
Well, that's the way they would have to bid to us.
I think it would have to be-
Because every project's different. You can't say, to review plan, you could say maybe to review plans on a certain project, for X amount of money, how much would it cost? I don't know if you could.
It's similar to, you know, some of the design work because depending on who ends up doing the work, whether it's a, you know, a structural engineer or architect or what have you, each one is paid at a different rate. So it's the same with engineering services.
But going back to like the water, they don't bid by the hour. Six, the ten contractors we have, something like that, they don't, they don't not bid by the hour, they bid by the job.
To what?
To make a water connection.
So that's, isn't that pretty, so many feet, they charge probably per feet. So they say, this is a hundred feet, it's going to be X amount of money. But this here, every one project could be three million and one project could be just a renovation.
But it's just like anything else. If you're doing a project, you can't say it's going to be twenty dollars a foot to dig or something like that because you might have a fence in the way you have to take down or you have to go through boulders, something like that. I think there has to be a way you can bid by the job. When we bid something, we always get bid by the job, not by the hour.
So I only figure town, like town council, for instance, we can only bid by hourly because we can't say, give us prices for, if we call you in regards to a contract, give us prices for-
I have no problem having the planning board in on discussion about that.
I think, you know, it's, it's better to include the planning board.
But I think it doesn't need to be changed.
And if, if that, if this has to go for bidding again, I'm fine with that.
Yeah, with, with, without the planning board, I would ask, we, we put everything out to bid. There's nothing in town that we, we don't put out to bid. I mean, is there, can you think of-
Engineering services is one of the few exemptions from the procurement law.
But towns go out to bid on it still.
Many towns do still.
Yeah.
It's a best practice.
Yeah, I, it's just amazing that this has been the same group for so many years, so.
Well, does, when a town like Butch uses the engineer, he, they bid by the job.
Not necessarily.
But sometimes, like, when they did Moon Street, they said it's going to be twenty-five thousand dollars to engineer it because I know it came in a little bit more money, something like that.
The engineering firm provides the estimate and then you make a decision as to whether or not you want to go with that engineer.
Oh, so I'm, so now, now I understand. So you're saying if we have three choices, every project, we say, what's going to be, I don't know, I don't know if every, the three firms would, every time, every time we call them.
I'm not saying, most, maybe only one would respond, but you're still going to give them a chance, give them a chance.
But even, you know, even if you say that, say, the senior engineer costs is one hour site, when you go visit the site, if the one firm is two hundred and fifty dollar, the other firm is not going to do like a hundred dollars. It's, the rates are going to be, you know, one engineering firm to another engineering firm, mostly similar rates, one attorney to another attorney firm.
That's why you bid. I don't think, I think you're wrong about that.
I think they'll be different. But, okay. Do you have something you wanted to add?
I am a firm believer in we should have competitive bids for everything.
So, so when you say, you're going to go out to bid for engineering services, you can't go out to bid per project. You need to go out for hourly.
I would need to do it hourly.
So that's what I'm, then I think when they're in front of the planning board, if there's three to choose from, and you saying then, each one gives-
Yeah.
Okay.
A quote of hours.
Gives a quote on what it's going to cost to do this project, I see.
And Roger's point, they're all going to be the same. They're not. You know, they could be a hundred dollars difference in the project, you know, what they're saying. It could be, you don't know. But it should go out to bid.
So, I'm sorry.
Can I just make a comment on that? You know, okay, when the ZBA, when we were dealing with Ninety-Two North Main Street, okay, we had Mr. Ali come in and we told him we were going to use VHB. He had no problem. We had, he gave us a certain amount of money and it was put into an account and it's for VHB services. As the ZBA needed VHB to go out and do any inspections, then and only then would they send us a bill and we would delete it. Now, at the end of the project, if there was any money left over from that amount, we have to give it back to the developer. And I mean, we were very careful on, you know, on some of the inspections. It got a little, a little crazy towards the end because there were certain things that, you know, weren't being, that weren't being done.
But that's the same, that's-
But that was on, but that was a set amount on a project and they said, okay, this is how much money you have to use for VHB, okay? We had not, we couldn't go over that because if we did, the developer wasn't going to pay for it.
Well, that, in this case, as I look at this spreadsheet, they put, this group put forty-five hundred on it. Then a few months later, they put twelve hundred into the account. So it's, it's ongoing. They keep adding to it as they use money.
There are certain projects, you know-
I don't see any of that.
They don't, they don't stay with that. They do, they often make mistakes. The engineer has to go back and correct the problems or inspect the problems because of the, the neighboring properties they complained. So they have to go and fix those problems, correct those problems, or inspect those problems. So eventually, you know, the developer, they just go, they do it. And then they have to tear it down and they have to put it back in a different way. Drainages. I don't, I don't want to say, you know, in the thing, you know, so openly which project was that, but it happened. So that's why some of the projects gets more, some of the projects are bigger projects. So they, the time of the engineer goes, time of the review takes a longer time. The number of, the plants they give- The number of, uh, the plans they give you, give it to the review engineers, often, you know, some of them, they don't give you a good plan. So their plan has to be reviewed and the plan has to be read. Some of the plans, they have to make it again and the second review. So if you recall, the 92 North Main Street, the plan may, I would have, if, if I think, you know, I think like a four, five, 10 plants have been reviewed.
I, I agree with that.
Ten different plants.
I still think it needs to go out to bid.
Yeah, see 90, 99% of these on this spreadsheet, they give an initial and then they give two or three more deposits.
It's all depends on how much time the engineers go.
When you find the planning board, they say you gotta put $10,000 in the budget.
So just in regards to that.
So can I, if I can ask a question to something Dave said, and you, you specifically said that project, I, I don't, I am gonna talk all projects. If what, if a developer gives us money and we use it for VHP and we run out of money and the developer says to the planning board, I already gave you money for the engineering review, I'm not giving you any more money, the project doesn't continue because the planning board doesn't approve anything. So of course you're gonna get, the, the developer has no choice but to give more money to pay for the engineering reviews, cause you won't sign off on their project.
And I'm sure that, I'm sure that it would, but like I said, you know, we're very cautious about, you know, what we need. I mean, when I was the chair, I only used VHP when it was absolutely necessary, okay? It had to do with the heat pumps, it had to do with the drainage, you know, those kind of things. Other than, and then the park, and then the parking lot, you know, as far as, you know, doing, um, when they wanted to do, we were gonna get a bond from him to make sure that everything else was done, all the, all the final things, the plantings and the final paving and all of that. We had VHP. Now, when they went out that time, I thought the guy was just gonna go out there for like, you know, half an hour. He was out there for two and a half hours, gave us a detailed list of everything that he saw that needed to be done and came back and told us exactly how much it was gonna be. We proposed that to Mr. Ali and told him, this is what VHP, and he was, he was accepting that.
I think in that case, they know exactly what he's looking for. In the planning board case, it's an ongoing changing issue. That's why.
It's the same, same thing in the planning board too. Uh, Nua Circle, can I comment on it? Nua Circle, uh, I would say planning for the, one of those meetings from the Nua Circles, there are about 10 residents came in. They said the paving was not done correct, the road pavings, and also the sidewalks was not done properly. The lights, whatever they put it in, the li, street lights was not done properly. The, wherever the brightness goes or all those things. So the only way we can verify is we have to send the review engineer. So if the developer would have done all those things in a right way, we don't have to send him back. He doesn't get the charge for that. Now, when the VHP goes, there will be a charge.
Well, you're wrong about that because when, when anybody does a project, the, the, the engineer always goes back and checks and see how it was done.
He didn't do it. He didn't do it. The, the, the developer did not do the correctly. There is a one, one inch lower.
What I'm saying is, the engineer always goes back and makes sure.
That's why the engineering cost goes up. And he corrected it. He agreed it and he corrected it.
I think what we're talking about is not, we're, we're getting down into the weeds. This discussion started out about who we're gonna use as an engineering firm. None of, we're not talking about taxpayer dollars here either. That, this does not affect the average taxpayer. This affects people that wanna build buildings in our town, which is a good thing. So if the best practice is to go out, and Anita already said it, you're not required, best practice, state says, many towns do, is to go out to bid. I don't know why we're, we're talking about what VHP does. It's, are we gonna, are, are we gonna go out to bid? And if we do go out to bid, are we gonna try to have more than one engineering firm as an approved engineering firm like we did with the sewer connection people, like we do with the, the water people? I, I, I think we're talking about the wrong thing here. We're talking about what these engineers do, that's not the decision and that shouldn't be the discussion.
I, I agree, I think.
Yeah, but the agenda item calls for review of VHP charges.
I don't know what is possible.
Agreed. At, at the same time, you know, VHP, it directly related to the planning board. I think, you know, it's, some planning board input should be here.
I think that was in the morning, exactly what I'm looking for too.
Mr. Chairman, so if that is the question, as Mr. Crowley said, can we not just put a motion out there tonight to go out to bid and take that direction?
I'd like to, I'd like to have the planning board in discussion.
Well, I think we can send them, if they have, if they would like to weigh in on this, we can put them on a future agenda meeting. The board wants, I guess it would go back to the board, if they wanna talk, come as a board and talk about it, we'll put them on a future addendum. If they look at it and they say, they have no comments on it as a board, then we can just discuss it at our next meeting. But now, this, this paperwork they sent us since 2004, it shows roughly 28, I think it was 28 projects. The project Raj is talking about is not on here, so can we check if this, this is an updated list of, I mean, this, I know this is what they sent us, but 28 projects since 2004?
Is there an easy way to?
I know what this is on. You don't know what the, the way, the way to figure out how much a certain business put into this project, you need to add up all the green lines.
Is there a way they can separate, so just the bottom line?
No.
Yeah, you gotta ask, we gotta use formulas.
And it, but it's.
I could do it, I got it at work, I thought about doing that.
But this is hard though, because they do this in between each one, so that would be part of the, you know, so you can't sort it all as a total. See, so I mean, I, I looked at it too to do that, but, so I mean, it doesn't say, this project spent this much money on this, you know, each one, you have to add up all the green lines, so.
But that's what I.
And then that one Raj is talking about is not on here, so maybe there's others.
No, no, Nua Circle is here.
It is here?
Nua Circle 223.
Oh, oh, Nua Circle, okay. So do we wanna?
Additional motion?
We can put it on the next, next agenda, if the board, if the planning board doesn't wanna, they'll meet probably till.
You know, for an example, I can give you this, Curtis Industries, they came in, the project was very clean, were, you know, they did follow every single instructions and then they didn't have any bigger fees to pay for it. Yeah.
Okay, so if the planning, if the planning, will they meet before our next meeting, Raj?
We'll, uh, next week, next week is the planning.
So I'll send the, I'll send the chairman a notice that it's, the, at this time, it appears the Board of Selectmen intends to, um, ask the chief procurement officer to go out to bid for engineering services for the town and that if they have concerns about that, they're welcome to come and address that with the board at the next meeting.
So let us know and we'll put them on the agenda for the next meeting.
Perfect.
Yeah? Thank you.
Thank you.
Review status of FY19 goals.
Right, I just wanted to, we had talked about getting this information out to see where we stand on our first few months of the FY19 period. Uh, so I wanted to quickly go through this, um, tonight with the board, just more for public information purposes. Um, at the summer workshop, the Board of Selectmen developed seven goals for themselves that included developing an OPED liability funding policy, minimizing tax impacts of budget increases or debt excluded projects, enhance the island at Route 12 and Beeman Street, develop a formal communication plan and policy, evaluate the feasibility of merger of the cemetery department with the DPW, develop a marijuana regulation bylaw and develop a town facilities management position. And on these, for the first goal, developing an OPED liability funding policy, this has been done. The board did adopt the OPED policy on October 3rd. Um, on October 15th, the town meeting also re-adopted the necessary state statute that would allow us to establish the fund. So in the spring, we'll be looking to appropriate some money to place into that fund. For goal number two, minimize tax impacts of budget increases or debt excluded projects. The intent of that was to set, um, annual budget increases to the lowest possible percentage while still meeting operational goals. And no activity has taken place on this, obviously, it will begin with the FY20 budget planning cycle, uh, but the intent is to identify any areas of potential savings within the FY20 budget. Require that any new initiative being proposed by a department would include detailed cost information and that the selectmen would make recommendations of any specific budget cuts they wish to see at least two weeks before the final budget hearings, so that impacts on those cuts could be determined and discussed at the final budget hearing. On goal three, enhance the island at Route 12 and Beeman Street. Um, the selectmen did assign two members to work with the DPW to look at the regrading of the island and establish a curb cut and their first meeting is set for October 25th. It's also intended that the board would at some point consider a vote to establish this site as a location for permitted food trucks or another similar economic development use. And also to consider establishing this location as a special adopt an island location. Those items, those last two items have not been started yet. Under goal four, um, to develop a formal communication plan and policy, um, we do have a draft communication plan and policy that the board has. So now at this point, the board would need to establish a subcommittee to review that and finalize a plan and policy, um, bring that draft back to the full board for discussion, um, hold a hearing to vote to approve the policy and then the town administrator would need to meet with all departments or committees to explain the use of the new plan and policy.
Does, do we want to, um, add two members to review this? Anybody interested in?
Or shall we add that to a future agenda?
If we can do it tonight, I mean, we can, we can move it forward if anybody's interested in.
Chip.
Raj, anybody else interested in looking over this policy?
The senior member?
Sure, I'll work on it.
Do I hear a motion?
I make a motion to appoint Shravan and Raj.
Second.
Second, I have a motion as second. All of, uh, any other discussion? Harry Nelll in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Okay, we can move, move a little forward on that.
Thank you. On goal number five, this was to evaluate the feasibility of merger of the cemetery department with the DPW and no action has been taken on this yet. So the intended steps were to meet with the cemetery board, to discuss the concept, meet with the DPW director to discuss the concept, draft an organizational, organizational chart that delineates the roles and reporting chain of command, um, review the two union contracts to identify any modifications that might be needed. Um, and it might be that it, we would need to roll them into one contract and then the final outcome, final step would be to negotiate the merger of the two operations. So these are all items that have yet to be addressed.
Is there anything, um, so is, who, who meet with the cemetery board and meet? The board, the board of selectmen?
The two, the two selectmen representatives.
Are there two selectmen?
No, no actions been taken on the ship.
Okay, to keep it moving, do we wanna? Meet the cemetery voters. I have no problem, I'll, I'll, I'll be one of the members on this if anybody else.
I'll be the other.
Okay, so do I have a motion?
I make a motion to appoint Mr. Utrio and Mr. Crowell.
Uh, do I have a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? Harry Nelll in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Perfect.
Thank you.
Moving on that one.
Um, number six was to develop a bylaw that regulates adult use marijuana and this has been completed. The October town 15, 15th meeting did approve the zoning bylaw, so that is completed. Goal seven was to develop facilities management position. Uh, the steps that had been taken on this were that the, um, draft full-time shared position description had been developed, um, but the Board of Selectmen upon review determined that the position might be better suited as being part-time and combined with the new building commissioner, if it's feasible. So the remaining steps on this would be to determine if the new building commissioner has the ability and interest to fulfill the role and depending on the outcome of item three, look to establish it either as the in-house position with the building commissioner or finalize, it's typo, finalize an RFP to outsource the work. So those, um, last two steps need to be taken and, um, the board will be meeting soon to discuss what needs to happen with the, um, building commissioner appointment.
Anybody have any comments on this?
On this one?
I don't think we're gonna put, we can talk as a board on this one, but what is, where does the building commissioner that we, that we had stand? Cause it hasn't come up for the last.
Right, I sent an email out earlier today to all of you to see if we could establish a workshop to talk about the options that we have available.
Okay, and we can go, we can go on to the next one, and we can talk about that.
So those were the seven for this year, but the board did have two carryover goals from FY18 and that's to continue with the town beautification goal, specifically to develop a proposed blight bylaw. And a meeting is being scheduled with the Board of Health to review the samples from other communities and to talk about how that might play out.
And we already have two members on this, isn't it?
Yes.
Myself.
Yes.
And we, is that, the meeting, the meeting date's locked in, October 24th, is it?
I have to confirm with them that it's, that they have time on their agenda, so I'll let you two know. And the second, um, was the citizen survey and employee survey. The citizen survey is almost ready to go live, there's just some, um, final checking on that that needs to happen. Um, I'm waiting for, um, a, a date for that, uh, last meeting of the subcommittee so that we can give the green light to getting the survey out there. The employee survey, um, exists in draft form, um, was prepared by myself and Norma Chenis, our resident volunteer. So, um, I think we're, we're almost, you know, halfway through the citizen survey process and more work needs to be done on the employee survey.
Yeah, Raj and I have had a few meetings on this and I believe we're gonna just meet to discuss some issues that one board member brought up.
Correct.
Okay, so we'll set something on that.
Yeah, so that's it for the selectmen goals. And then for the town administrator goals, um, there were four. One was to develop a succession plan for key staff. Second was to expand the use of Municity, it's a software, permitting software, to expand beyond just the building department, but allow it to be used by all permitting boards. The third was to establish regular staff workshops on communications, team building, customer service. And the fourth was to replace the 10-year capital plan with an expanded 20-year capital plan. So on these goals, number one, develop a succession plan, um, the process was to touch base with each department head to discuss and develop best options for developing either in-house staff promotion or for effective recruitment to ensure a smooth transition. So I've been meeting with senior department heads, that's underway, I'm preparing notes and I'll send that report to the Board of Selectmen by January. Goal number two was to expand the use of the Municity software for all permitting boards and the purpose of this was to allow all departments to electronically capture parcel data, um, for, for, you know, any permit that's been established for a lot, can be all contained in one location, very easy for any board or committee member to access that information. Uh, our current software, the version of Municity, um, needs a major upgrade to allow it to be used as, as was intended, so quotes are being obtained for that. In the meantime though, a wrinkle has been thrown into the process. The city of Worcester, um, has established a task force of the, um, Health Alliance looking to see if there's any benefit or feasibility of jointly procuring a different permitting software that can be used by all towns. And those discussions are just beginning. So either way, it looks like we will need some funding for the, either the procurement of the upgraded Municity or to purchase the shared regional software. So I'll keep the board up to date on where that stands.
Anita on that one, do, do you have any feeling on a timeline from the city of Worcester when they're gonna have a decision? Cause sometimes these things take, I would hate to see us upgrade Municity and then three years later have, you know, all the towns around us not using that.
I, I did reach out to the assistant director, um, of the Worcester Department of Public Health and she said that, um, there was a, a meeting held several weeks ago, she's gonna be sending an upgrade, um, update out to everybody to let us know. They want to, um, set up a new, another joint meeting of all the communities to discuss what might be the next steps. I, I tend to think that there'll be a decision made whether, you know, to go with a regional software or not by next spring. So probably in time for us to make, for the town to make decision about funding for the spring town meeting.
We can just, you probably have notes on that, but yeah, I don't know if you wanna add that to the slide so we can know where it stands. But you, yeah, yeah, I don't know if you wanna add it or?
Oh, I will add it on my notes. So goal number three was to, um, establish some regular workshops on communications, team building and customer service. Um, so that is underway currently, um, we, we have completed one team building workshop, it was held on August 9th. We, we have completed one team building workshop, it was held on August 9th. We have a department head level workshop on effective communication being scheduled for November 15th. And we have an all-staff webinar training on dealing with stress, meant to be another team building webinar set for December 13th. And I'm hoping that before I leave, I can at least get three more workshops scheduled into the pipeline for the remainder of the fiscal year, so that we can continue with that effective program. And the fourth item was just develop the 20-year capital plan. I do have a volunteer that has stepped forward and is helping to create that updated spreadsheet format. He's working with me right now to insert all of the capital-eligible assets into the list. And I just received word late last week that we will have a team of four assumption accounting students who will be working with the volunteer and I as part of a, a project that they have under their curriculum. So that was pretty exciting. So I'm hoping to get this updated plan sent to the capital investment board by the end of the calendar year.
Do you have, the capital investment board has a fairly robust Excel spreadsheet that is, are you, is that your starting point, or do you at least have that for the?
I, I do have that, and the intent is that once this is put in place, then the capital investment board can work to see how we can mesh the two together.
It might, if you've got four accounting students from assumption, you might wanna give them that at the get-go and say, this is what we have, so, so that instead of meshing it together, they can do what they need, build on it.
Right.
And then, rather than try to marry the two of them.
Right, the functional important part of the capital investment board spreadsheet was the projections and the assignment of cost. And I do think that it'll be pretty easy for the, the accounting students to take that and apply it to the new spreadsheet.
Perfect.
And that is it for the goal updates.
We're moving along on those, thank you. And then the next one is Pat Crowley and the ABM ESCO project, M&amp;V status.
Can I, can I, is this on the agenda?
Yes, I'm here for that.
Yes, that's under the town administrator's report.
Oh, okay.
Yep.
I'm sorry if I, we could've, we could take.
Do you wanna take that out of?
Before we let Pat talk about ABM. Yeah, I'm sorry, I didn't know that you were here for that.
He's been sitting there here for a while, I thought.
Yeah.
Hey, I'm here at your invitation, not the other way around.
Come on over.
So this is under my report. As the board knows, as the board knows, we have been working with Community Opportunities Group to, through a grant provided by the Community Compact Program, to do an update of the housing production plan. And you've all received the draft document, you've received the present, copy the presentations that COG has been using. Tonight, we have Courtney Starling here to answer any questions you might have, but the purpose of putting this under my report tonight is to ask the board to vote to approve this.
Go on the screen.
Do you have a slide presentation?
Yes, I do, I have that one. I actually have a slightly modified version, maybe shorter for you guys tonight.
Hey, you can.
Can I borrow your, can I borrow that real quick? Let me get the dongle.
It's already on?
It's already up there.
She's getting a abbreviated version.
It's a lot of locations to, it truncated, it's just a touch for you guys. And as soon as this goes in the USB port, it'll be in business.
Can you give me a few seconds to get that started?
They do, it's doing a refusal mode right now, it's blocking out.
We'll discuss number three in our old business. Do you have something, do you want me to start? Or do you want us?
I don't have, no.
Anita, what do you have on that?
The update is that ABM actually did come out and do an audit of the lighting, the room that had the lighting concerns at the library. And they today, just today, sent an estimate to the library director that the work to be done would cost approximately $5,000. So, you know, whether or not the library has funding available to do that work right now, I don't know. If not, it would have to wait until springtime. But at this point, you know, ABM at least has come back with their promised solution to the lighting concerns that they had. That was really the remaining item that we had in terms of ABM performance under the contract. We still have that standing question of whether or not the board wants to continue with the contract for measurement and verification with ABM. It costs us $15,000 annually. Unless we, unless we have the board vote to cancel that contract, we are still supposed to be sending the M&amp;V report to DOER every year. They'll take us off that necessary to-do list if we cancel the contract with ABM. So the board needs to make a decision. Do you wanna have ABM go ahead and do another measurement and verification for one more year, or do you wanna cancel that ABM contract?
Make a motion to cancel the contract with ABM.
That was quick.
I mean, really, Pat.
Do we have any discussion on that? Anything in need, do you want to add to that?
No, I mean, I, I think, I think we all understood that we were just waiting to try to get them to finalize what they needed to do for the library before you made that decision.
So I have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now.
Hello, everyone, my name is Courtney Starling, I work for Community Opportunities Group. We've been in town working on the housing production plan for a fairly short period of time, we got started in summer. And we have at this point a complete, or a final draft of the plan. The planning board reviewed it and approved it last week, and we are here tonight hoping for approval for you and from you. Just briefly, I'm gonna tell you a little bit about a housing production plan and what, why you do it, and what it will do for you, and what's supposed to be in it. There are a few purposes for doing it. It's an avenue to safe harbor, which I'll tell you about in the next slide. It helps meet your local housing needs, it identifies strategic options, and it provides training and information. Basically, on one level, it's an educational exercise, you know, it's a bit of an academic exercise where the state has certain things that it wants to know about. And then the, beyond that is kind of giving some actual benefit to you guys as the town, which would be to figure out what some of the local needs are, look at some of your demographic projections, look at what some strategic options might be for what's brought in that are sensitive to your context. So instead of coming with planner in a can and saying, you should do this and you should do that, we actually try to come in and meet you and talk to a few people and figure out what might fly and what might be viable. And again, the training and education, every time you get into public and talk about it, people tend to learn another thing. The housing production plan has several requirements. It needs to have a comprehensive housing needs assessment. You had a housing needs analysis done last year by another consultant, so we've taken that analysis and kind of moved it a step forward. The housing, or the affordable housing goals are set by the state, it's a numerical target, and then implementation strategies for how to meet that target. The last stop on the road is the adoption by the planning board and the board of selectmen, so that's where we are today. The comprehensive housing needs assessment, this is kind of an ugly slide, and I apologize. Demographic trends at the top are kind of what informs what's going on at the bottom. Your population, as you're probably aware, the projections right now are that your, your population is projected to decline, and your population is projected to continue to age, as all of us do. Your householders, generally speaking, the majority right now are 44 to 64, but 34% are already over 65. Again, this speaks to an aging population. Your disabled population is growing, 12% overall, 30% once you're above 65. So this has some real, you know, in real terms, this has some impact as to what you need from housing, because if you have people, you know, a large aging population, they tend to start getting into mobility challenges and things like that. And so, you know, that two-story colonial with laundry in the basement and, you know, long driveway to shovel might not be a model that works, you know, when you're 106, as we're all hoping to be. So the implications based on some of the things that are happening with your data is that, again, housing that's appropriate for seniors and disabled people, and also single-person households, we have a huge growth in single-person households in the region, whether they are, whether the householder is elderly, whether they're my age, whether they're 18, doesn't really matter, we have single-person households as, as a big population growth area. How that impacts housing, again, is that 66% of your housing has more than three bedrooms. A single person by themselves does not necessarily need housing with three bedrooms, and they might be overhoused in that situation. And so, again, we're just kinda looking at what's happening with the people and whether or not the structures match. There's also a need for moderately priced housing for homeownership. Your $200,000 to $400,000 range in your real estate market has a very short life. Things that are going to sell for $350,000 may not even make it to market. Those are your properties that have the most demand, and there's not enough of it. And also deeply affordable rental units, by deeply affordable, those are apartments that people could pay and could afford to live in if they earn less than $50,000 a year. Right now, 40%, nearly 40% of your rest, your renters are cost burden, that means that they can't afford their rent. And a third of your homeowners are, that means that they can't afford their mortgage, property taxes, and homeowner's insurance. So it is a serious issue, it's one that's increasing, and that's kind of why we talk about affordable housing to begin with. The state's goals, this is a moving target, and it moves every 10 years with the decennial census. Right now, you are required, under the state's 40B mandate, you are required to have 273 affordable housing units. You have 221, you're working well at it, but you are 52 short currently. That number's gonna move again in the 2020 census, based on your building permit activity for the past eight years. We've picked up 266 new units, and assuming that the census gets every single one of them, we're estimating that your, your 40B target's gonna move from 273 to 300. So I told you, I was gonna tell you a little bit about safe harbor when we got to the slide. The purpose in adopting a housing production plan is that it makes the town eligible for safe harbor. Safe harbor, if the town meets its housing targets, which is 14 units a year currently, and will be 15 units a year in 2020. But if you permit that number of SHI eligible units in a 12-month timeframe, you can petition to the state for safe harbor, which gives the town the right to deny comprehensive 40B permits. So that's what you get. That's why you do it. If you happen to get a slightly larger project in a one-year timeframe, and again, that'll be 28 to 30 units, let's say you get an all-rental project and it's 25% affordable, all of those units will count towards your SHI, whether they're affordable or not. And so if you get a 30-unit building, that could potentially put you into safe harbor for two years. And so you could deny for two years. We put together some housing goals as the plan requires them. We put together goals that are fairly general, but that's why the strategies get more specific to it. One of the things we always talk about is housing diversity. Housing diversity is important so that you have social diversity. If you, it's hard to operate a town if you have all seniors or all families with kids, you kinda need a little bit of variety to spread, spread around costs, and so having different kinds of housing helps you get different kinds of households. However, in a pursuit of different kinds of households and, you know, fiscal sustainability, you might not necessarily wanna lose your appeal as a small town, and we're not looking to change that here. We also, you know, naturally do wanna provide citizens with the greatest possible opportunities to thrive. That's not generally something that people object to, but, you know, this means, again, basic services, whether these are seniors, you have the advanced life support services for ambulance that you provide for the region, you guys are particularly well-seated for a number of things, because you do have strong social services. And also to continue to support a strong economic base for the community. Housing and economic development are inherently related. If you don't have a place for workers to live, you cannot have business. People locate businesses based on the idea that they have a skilled workforce that can fill their jobs, and so it's, they are two things that go hand in hand together. I don't have many clients who aren't interested in economic development and shifting the residential tax burden, and so the important thing to always talk about is make sure their workers have a place to live. You know, if you've got guys working in machine shops that are just starting out making 16 bucks an hour, you might not be able to afford to live here. And so there, you know, it depends on what's happening, but that is kind of the one thing, is just to make sure you got enough variety so that people can locate here, and also that people can find housing that's appropriate for them as they transition through their lives, whether they're having kids or retiring and that sort of thing. The strategies in a, in a housing plan do need to identify the characteristics of housing that the town likes, publicly owned land that the town might use for the development of affordable housing, sites where 40B permits might be encouraged, zoning amendments that might facilitate housing, opportunities for regional collaboration, and the COG specials, we like to throw in ways to increase technical capacity, because doing all the other things requires a little capacity. In terms of housing preferences, from the people that we spoke at, or spoke to, again, getting at designing housing where you can age in place, smaller-scale apartment buildings, your more recent multifamily applications have tended to be rather large-scale projects, and not everybody wants to live in an apartment building that's that size, but may still, still need a rental unit, so we're talking about mixing in things that are more in like the 4 to 20 unit. You know, kind of, there's a larger variety of multifamily out there than just big multifamily. And again, you need, there's a pretty, pretty pronounced shortage of apart rental housing that's suitable for families, and so there's very little with three bedrooms. This is, they're kind of tough to build from a permitting perspective. People do tend to get concerned about fiscal impacts from three-bedroom apartments. However, your school counts are declining, and you do have an economy of scale issue there, where you still have to pay for a superintendent and a principal and that sort of thing, so you also need a little, you need kids, quite frankly. You're a little low, you need, so, so that's happening. The other thing, and I think this is kind of the biggest thing when we talk about housing, is housing that actually fits in. Like I said, you've gotten a couple of large multifamily developments, but you're largely a single-family community, unfair, you know, you're, you know, single families on one acres, that's a lot of what you're doing if it's not our DCR land. And so, you know, fitting, if you are going to develop anything, and one of the things that we're certainly not proposing in this plan is to take any of your remaining lands that have not been developed and build on them. You are aware of your water supply protection issues, you're aware of your open space needs, and so we're not really, we're not proposing that you do anything like that. We're proposing that you look at what you have and try to maximize what you've already built on. But to do so in a way that doesn't, you know, kind of turn, you know, the neighbor's house into a doghouse, you know, when you build one large thing and the neighbors next door have a post-war ranch, and all of a sudden they have shadows and Goliath leaning over them. People don't tend to like that, so we don't tend to promote that. We've talked a little bit about the price ranges that are needed, moderately priced rental units below $1,800, most new rental housing does come in around that price. When we did our rental market survey, there was only one unit available, it was a single-family home, and I believe it was renting, that I don't remember, maybe $2,000? So housing is, housing can be very tough to come by. The appropriate sites, there's actually a public site that, it's a Housing Authority site, that is, that has planning underway for expansion, which would be the 87 Maple Street project. It's, that current, there's been discussion about that for, it seems, some, some amount of time, and it, and the Housing Trust, excuse me, is moving forward with that plan. There's other sites that the town owns, there's land on Pollex, Tyben and Drive, it's currently zoned conservation. I suspect if it were to come out of conservation zoning, there would be other competing interests that might also want a crack at that. However, it could also be a decent site for affordable housing, so we've been that forward. The fraternal, social, and religious organizations with surplus property generally are, can be very good partners, whether it's a legion. I have a couple of clients where they've been great partners to build veterans housing. You have the Oddfellows Hall, which is lovely, I don't know what they plan to do. And so those, the VFW, there's, those organizations, the social clubs do tend to be somewhat dying organizations, where they're not getting new membership, and so sometimes they do have some plans where there's surplus land, and so that could be an opportunity. Conversion of existing units into affordable units, this usually comes in the form of buying deed restrictions, so instead of building anything, you just take a unit that already exists and get a deed restriction for it. And there might be some underutilized commercial sites to also consider, where you've got a lot of pavement and not a lot of building, and possibly not the most taxable asset you could be having. When, it does like us to talk about zoning amendments. The, your zoning right now is pretty low-density, it makes it pretty hard, I think, for a developer to make reasonable use of some of your, some of your sites that might be opportunities. You have some, some level of abandoned structures. This is the veterinary clinic down the street. I am really hot to trot to have that redone as a New England farmhouse with a rear L, because that's a great multifamily building right there. But you couldn't do it under the current zoning, and that's kind of, you know, part of it is kind of looking at these things, and, you know, because this isn't that difficult to imagine, except for the fact that it can't be done. And so sometimes we kind of do performance zoning, really, where we work backwards, where we, like, these are the things that we like, and then we facilitate it being able to happen. But you've been talking about village center zoning, that certainly would be helpful to increase some of your housing diversity in a, in a minor way, you know, it's the proverbial unit above the shop, but. You know, it's the proverbial unit above the shop, but again, that's been a viable business model for 300 years, and it may be for 300 more. Looking at conversions of existing structures into multi, that would be looking at the vet clinic. I mean, reuse of underutilized or abandoned sites. You've got quite a lot of RV parking right now. I don't know if you're going to be doing that forever, but at a later point, that might, you know, that might be something to consider. You have the Walmart Plaza, there is the Planet Fitness Plaza. You know, there's a lot of DCR constraints, but you also have land that may not be used the same way for the next, you know, in upcoming years, and thinking about what they might be next is, again, we're not, we're not promoting building on anything you have in your town, and so we're really just looking at what you have and where there might be some opportunities as, as time keeps marching forward. In terms of regional partners, you have a number of people who are operating in the region who do work in affordable housing. We don't tend to recommend that people reinvent the wheel. So, you know, for example, one thing that people can do are down payment assistance programs, rather than having the town operate that. Typically, we'll say, why don't you partner with Blister because they have that? And so we've identified some of the people who are operating in the region and some of the things that they do. For example, CMRPC is your regional planning commission. They're going to be there to do your complete streets plans and give you some zoning workshops or whatever it is that you have them come in and do, which is not necessarily the same as what our Cap Solutions does, who do monitoring and housing lotteries and affordable and fair housing marketing plans and stuff like that. So there's kind of a diversity of what these organizations do. Have a tab, people are quite familiar with Mass Housing, Mass Housing Partnership, you know, MHP does technical assistance, so when your planning board is reviewing a 40B, for example, and need additional engineers. And then there are a variety of funding sources, both for the developer side and also for the planning board, for the planning side. So that includes Lytech, which are the housing tax credits. Those are for projects that are for more than eight assisted units. It is likely that 87 Maple Street will be a Lytech project. There's Mass Works and Complete Streets grants. Sometimes you can use local money to leverage a Mass Works grant for infrastructure and use that for, to support housing development if you need pipes. And the Mass Housing Investment Corporation does, if you're really into financials or financial products, I encourage you to go to their website, but they do mostly developer assistance. Finally, our greatest hits of increasing organizational capacity. You don't really have staff capacity to be doing affordable housing activities. You have a, you have ongoing consultant services provided as needed. That's actually one of my coworkers, she is, exists for you guys to maintain compliance. And so, but there's not much ability right now for you guys to proactively plan and to proactively seek out projects and things like that. You have the Affordable Housing Trust, which are volunteers. And so there's some difficulty there, particularly in the world of development, because you have a building commissioner, but there's nobody really doing zoning, and they, you don't have a planner either that's assisting the planning board and the Board of Appeals. And so there's kind of, it's kind of like this gray area where we interviewed a lot of people who gave suggestions for zoning bylaws. Some of them had been adopted 10 years prior, so it seems that there's not exactly the person there to, you know, when you do have somebody who's interested in building a project, for them to actually talk to. And so that can also, that can also impact what the town is able to attract. Education and training resources, affordable housing is deeply complicated, and so is the regulatory compliance, I'm not going to lie to you. There is an issue with the Affordable Housing Trust. It doesn't have a sustainable funding source. There's the CPA, but they're going for allocations on a yearly basis. At this point, they don't really have a strategic plan, which makes it a little harder, I think, to ask for money in advance, but without knowing how much money you have, they can't really plan on doing anything either, because with affordable housing, there are, the opportunities and the timing for how the funding works can be very complicated, and so without them being able to reliably know whether or not, like, they'll be able to kick in gap financing or something like that on 87 Maple Street creates a very, makes it very difficult for them to operate with full functionality. In terms of roles, you know, we talk about, everybody kind of anecdotally knows about a few properties in town, whether or not, you know, somebody's, you know, going to move to Florida, and the kids don't want to deal with it, or whether or not, you know, somebody's, you know, maybe thinking of selling or closing a business or that sort of thing. Anecdotally, people, you know, there's a bit of a rumor mill on a local level, and so being able to kind of identify opportunities before they are, you know, before they hit the market, and the town doesn't have the ability to, like, act fast enough to buy land because real estate transactions happen quickly. Explore partnerships. You can be proactive if you do have a site like an old veterinary hospital and maybe, I don't know, a willing property owner. You could work with them and a developer in a friendly 40B process. Once again, you can't build that under local zoning, but you could probably do it under 40B, that, you know, to actually seek out people who'd be willing to do it. You can actually, you can actually look for things that you might want, and so, again, you know, we're kind of looking at, how can you get ahead instead of just being chasing behind developers, but, you know, actually think about things that you might want in your town and try to get them yourselves, try to attract them. And so that's a bit of what we talk about with local capacity. There's a lot of ways to do it. You know, you can do complex financial programs. You can, you know, just have some, you can have a town planner. That would help. There's, there's a whole spectrum of, you know, a whole menu of options, but it really does depend on what it is that you want to do as to what makes the most sense for how to do it. And so that brings us to the end of the plan and the adoption process. As I said, we went to the planning board last week. We're here tonight requesting approval. If you do choose to do that, we'll submit the plan to DHCD for comments. If they have any revisions, they will let us know, and typically the turnaround is less than 90 days. If there are any revisions, we will make them. We usually turn it, we don't usually get significant comments, so generally we're able to turn it around in about a week and get it out to them for final approval and acceptance. So that's our process. What we've learned, that's the whole plan, and hopefully not that long of a time.
Do you have any questions or comments?
One question. Back on the slides where you were talking about the compliance with 40B.
Yes.
You speak to the 10%.
Yes.
But I've been hearing.
The land area.
Yes, no, yes, no, on the 2.5% of land use.
1.5% of land area.
But I've been hearing we're there, we're not there. What can you tell me about that?
I can tell you that the state has been instructed by the courts to issue guidance, which they have finally done. In the guidance, they have given better information as to what does and does not count toward the land area calculation. The last time that you had one done, it did appear that you meet 1.5%. And I would say, based on the alterations from the new guidance, while I can neither confirm nor deny that you make the 1.5%, I can say that you will have to spend money to defend it. And so, because DHCD's position right now is that they do not authorize or certify the 1.5% land area calculation, they basically wait for it to get bounced to them on an appeal. And so, so the liability with that is that, while I can tell you that I think you may make the 1.5% land area calculation, the only way to prove it is to defend it, to...
And that number doesn't change?
The 1.5% number does not change. That is not based on population, that is based on land area. Because you have so much land that's encumbered by DCR in particular, it really, you, I see a lot of people who are trying that I kind of side-eye, but no, you have a lot of encumbered land, and it's, it seems...
And there's no application process?
DHCD will only certify it if it's challenged, and at that point, it is incumbent upon the town to defend how they came to the analysis and the count that they meet the 1.5% land area.
That's ridiculous.
I am not here to disagree with you on that.
No, I know, I know you probably agree with me, but, okay, thank you.
Yeah, so I can say that the 1.5% is something that you potentially do have, but I do have to just give the caveat that in order to assert that, you do have to prove it.
So if we, if we were to prove that, we would, we wouldn't need any more affordable housing?
Probably not. What it would take is you, so I'm, just to be honest with you, what it would take to actually get there is you got a 40B application, you denied the permit, they appealed it, you said, you told the Housing Appeals Committee that you have 1.5% land area. The lawyers get together and they decide whether or not you do.
Well, that's the process, too.
Once the lawyers decide we do...
If the Housing Appeals Committee finds in your favor that you meet the 1.5% land area, as long as that regulation does not change or the methodologies for the count, you should remain certified.
Am I correct, we only did that in one case so far, like in Weymouth or someplace?
I think there, right now, I think there's like five that, there's, there's actually a slideshow that the state put out on the guidance that, there's a collection of 10 that are claiming it, and the state says that there is nobody that they are aware of at this point in time. There are five people who have put forward that they do, but right now, DHCD says that there is nobody that they are aware of, because I don't think any of those have gone through, gotten to that point. And so it is a, it is a process that everybody has a problem with, so I assume that there will be further changes.
To make it harder.
Well, it's, it's, the, because it goes right hand in hand with Safe Harbor, and because the towns are feeling particularly hosed by 40B, there's actually been a lot of, Safe Harbor, for example, has been one of the concessions from the state where they're saying, you know, where they're getting an earful from the towns that 40B is very unpopular, and so now they're saying, well, hey, if you start meeting your production and actually building, we'll start giving you some more authority to say no. It's, you know, 40B's been on the books since 1969. It's like anything else that swings in both directions with politics, and so there are some years that we're very bullish about it. These are, the Baker administration currently is one of those administrations, and there are some years when people get more traction to, you know, there, you know, there gets to be more traction for repeal. We just had one of those that failed. But, so it is a little cyclical. I do anticipate further changes there.
I make a motion to approve the housing production plan.
Second.
A motion second. Any other discussion?
How long this housing production plan is valid?
The production plan is good for five years.
Okay, I have a motion second. Hall of favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay.
Thank you, folks.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chicago, for great work.
Just wanted to know, and I'm sure the court would, tell me if this is right. The census is basically what covers the 10%. So if in 2020, we get to 10% or over, we're basically safe until the next census. But basically, if we get over the 10%, if anybody tries to come in with a 40B project, the ZBA can say, we're not interested, unless it's beneficial to the town, then we could say...
Basically, from this point forward, you want to be, make sure if anybody's putting down a number of units at a time that they do, that for every 10 of them that they're doing, that you get one affordable out of them, just so you keep pace, so as people are building, you don't fall behind. And so, when you do have subdivisions and that sort of thing.
Because we jumped, we jumped with Mr. Ali's project in 9200, believe it or not, because it was all rentals, we, before the DAC counted that, we were at 5.71%. And with, I sent all the paperwork to DAC to get it corrected, and they came back with 8.16, I believe it is. So we jumped almost three points with that 80 units. Not saying that, not looking for another 40B project, but I'm just saying, you know, we'll be safe once we get, if we can get to that, over that 10% in the census.
And that is another one of the concessions to the state, from the state to communities with 40B, because the state is trying so hard to get rental housing, they are counting every single unit in those projects on the SHI, whether they're affordable.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Wonderful evening. I just heard of your retirement. Congratulations.
Thank you.
I'm dreaming of that day, too.
Me, too.
I'll be a hundred...
How many days, Chris?
How many days, Chris?
How many days?
Town administrators reports, report.
So continuing on, I'm going to actually take this out of order this evening. Wanted to give you the 2018 chapter land report. Per the municipal schedule, the assessors are required to give us their chapter land reports. So in the packet, you have the report put together by the assessing staff. This is pending their Board of Assessors approval, but the report indicates that we have 221.35 acres in Chapter 61 land, that's foresty land, 312.76 acres in Chapter 61A, which is agricultural, horticultural, and 235.41 acres of 61B, which is recreational land. So that's a total of 769-some-odd acres that we have in chapter land altogether. And obviously, once this has been finalized by the Board of Assessors, we will get this posted on the website. Our obligation for the MS4, the NEPTES submittal, I wanted to give credit to Butch Jackson and his working group for having developed the, the actual permit application that they put forward to DEP. It was required to be in by October 1st, and I have to say that, you know, we are fortunate here in West Boylston that when many communities face a lot of expense dealing with the mandates of the, the stormwater permitting, DCR handles a lot of the testing of water bodies, which constitutes a lot of the expense. So that is good for us, because it then leaves us just to be able to focus on the public education aspects of the program. And those public education programs are for both residents and businesses to cover, you know, impact of illegal dumping into septic lines, catch basins, streams, as well as helping developers understand these stormwater regulations. So good work to Butch and to his working group for getting that pulled together. That permit will expire in June of 2022. Under our Green Communities update, we did receive that grant of $145,000, and that was to do energy efficiency projects at the school. That work is underway. It's actually in the process of being bid right now by the school business manager. At this point, it looks as though the bidding and the actual work involved will be done by the end of the calendar year, and with successful completion of that grant, the town is then eligible to apply for future competitive grants as soon as next spring, if the town is interested. We do still have additional projects that were identified in our 2017 energy audit, so the town should give strong consideration to looking for other projects to apply for competitive grant funds.
Can I just ask, with the library they were talking about, ABM, would that be one of those?
It could be for a future one. It's, it can't be for this round because we are...
No, for future, yeah.
Future, yes, absolutely. Grants update. We did apply for two grants, which we received notice that we did not receive grant funds for. The first one was the Community Compact IT Grant. This was for updated assessor software in the amount of $18,300. We did not receive that grant, so that will be a future funding request. I'm sure that the assessors will be putting forward next year. And the DPW had applied to the Department of Fish and Game for a culvert replacement grant. That was for engineering of that Prescott Street culvert, and that engineering grant was for $65,500, and unfortunately, we did not get that either. And then I just want to lastly thank everyone involved with the Townwide Cleanup Day this past Saturday. We ended up having over 130 people that showed up. We had roughly 110 that were planned to be there, but the day of, it was wonderful. We had additional people coming out and saying, hey, I see this is going on, I want to help. So it was a fantastic response of volunteers and town officials. We were able to accumulate approximately 25 cubic yards of trash off the roadways, which is pretty amazing. We'll get the actual tonnage report when the dumpster goes to, you know, for emptying, but when you think that's, that's a lot of trash for us to take off our roadways.
I'd say it was well over 200 bags, well over.
Quick question on that. Did you ever able to count the nip bottles?
That was one consistent theme. Didn't matter what road you were on, everyone was saying that there were a large number of empty nip bottles along the road.
Sure.
But I just wanted to thank the group, DPW Director Butch Jackson. He helped with the sourcing of all the supplies. We had John Scanell from DCR working on the mapping portion of the work and provided some supplies. Norma Chanis, resident volunteer, she helped with distributing the flyers, seeking donations, posting on social media, and then resident Rachel Picar, who created and maintained that interactive webpage that we had. And also, lastly, a late addition to our group, but very successful addition to our group, was Kate Boston, who cooked all of that fantastic food that people enjoyed at the end of the morning. So obviously, without them, we could not have made the event be as successful as it was. So we will be... So we will be posting the names of all the participants on the website as a way to thank everyone, but I just, it was a fun event, as, as we heard Colleen Abrams say, I think everyone who participated had a good time despite the cold rainy weather. And that is it for my report.
Okay. Next is, this updates, approval of RAC Change Order Number Four for $84,936.
So... Second.
Have a motion second, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Invoices, RAC invoice number six for $761,863.
Second.
Have a motion second, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Alliance, does it have...
Environmental Group.
Environmental Group.
Environmental Group. Invoice number 60227867 for $2,425.40.
Second.
Have a motion second, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, next is Yankee Engineering, invoice number 25343 for $795.
So... Second.
Have a motion second, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? West Boylston Police Department invoice dated 9/29/2018 for $912 for police details. Your motion.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, any other discussion?
What kind of detail for this?
Police details when they were doing trenching in the roadway for utilities.
Oh, okay. Any other discussion, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? General updates?
Everybody's invited, they're doing the signing, and they're supposed to give the rough coat of asphalt today or yesterday, I think, I don't know if they signed it, I'm invited today, but it's supposed to start with asphalt, so it's, it's getting there.
Okay, meetings, invitations, and announcements. The only thing I have on this is I'd like to thank all residents that came out to town meeting Monday, Monday night, is it Monday night? Yeah, Monday night, we were able to get the town's business done on that night, so I appreciate the residents that came out for that. Any other announcements from any board members? Future agenda items and selectments reports, the only thing, did you say you were going to talk about the building commissioner in your report?
No, what I'm asking is that we establish a separate meeting date to...
Oh, we're going to have a, yeah, okay, so we don't have to, we don't have to do anything on that right now.
Not tonight.
You said, yeah. Any, go ahead.
I just want to echo what Chris said about the town meeting, we had a quorum, it was a very civil discussion on some heated topics unlike you see on social media, and also want to congratulate, congratulate Anita on her retirement, and thank you for your service at the town.
Thank you.
Okay, the only thing under future agenda items, can we, I think we need to set some type of guidance for the board when, now that the adult use marijuana is here, so I mean, I know we've had, we've had a meeting, but maybe next meeting or the meeting after, that we set some guidance, when someone walks in the door, how we have a checklist for these people.
A checklist of sorts, yes.
And then the host agreement has to come to us, how that process works, maybe we can review other host agreements, because I know there's, there's groups out there looking, so we can maybe be ahead of it before they come.
Yeah.
So I don't know about the next agenda, we can talk about it or the gender after that.
I think the sooner the better.
Yeah, so maybe we can try to put something together. Anything else for future agenda items or reports? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion to adjourn. Second. Motion and a second. The heads are for winning, okay, two to nothing, I believe. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, thank you very much.